Can you hear me, Steve?
I'm sorry?
I just want to make sure that my microphone is working well this time.
I can hear you, Carl.
I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I'm operable after the last experience.
I can see we're recording. Are we broadcasting also now, Connor?
Yes, we are, sir.
Do I have, do we have to join SAG? Mike, do you have your union card?
No.
Okay. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Braintree Zoning Board of Appeals. Notice is given by the zoning board of appeals that pursuant to the remand order of the Massachusetts Land Court dated October 16th, 2020, and under the provisions of Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 11, in that a public hearing will be conducted remotely via Zoom on Monday, November 23rd, 2020 at 7:00 in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order. Said order suspended the provisions of the open meeting law to promote public health and social distancing. This public hearing will not be conducted in an open, publicly accessible place. Instead, public access to the hearing and deliberations will be achieved by adequate alternative means that allow the public to follow the proceeding in a third-party communication technology that is readily accessible to the public via the Internet and telephone. And then listed below for information is the Zoom webinar information, the telephone in webinar information, and any international numbers if anybody from any other country is interested. This is Arista Development LLC is seeking relief from zoning bylaw Sections 135, 407, 135, 701, and 135, 705 to construct a three-to-four-story, 30-unit, age-restricted, multifamily residential building on a 50,857-square-foot development site. The residential building in sight will not comply with the density of the open space requirements pursuant to 135, 705. The maximum number of stories pursuant to 135, 701. The applicant seeks variances to exceed and deviate from these requirements. The property at 107 Hancock Street is 44,050 square feet. It's own general business and is shown on Assessment Plan 1009 as plot 68. The property at 99 Hancock Street is 6,807 square feet. It's own general business in Residence B. And in parentheses, it says C135, 306. And is shown on Assessment Plan 1009 as plot 64. The full application may be reviewed at the Department of Planning and Community Development in Town Hall at 1 JFK Memorial Drive on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from 8:30 to 4:30. Tuesday from 8:30 to 7:00, and Friday from 8:30 to 1:00 are on the town's website, and it lists the town's website. That's the, that's the public notice of the hearing. I'm satisfied that the abuders, and the abuders to the abuders within 300 feet have been duly notified. Sitting on this hearing.
Chairman Carl, if I may interrupt, I'm sorry. Do you mind doing a roll call of attendance before listing the board members?
Oh, no, I don't. What if I said yes? Would that affect? No, I don't mind. All right. Roll call of the board. Mr. Gary Walker.
Yep.
Mr. Mike Ford.
Here.
Mr. Richie McDonough.
Yeah.
Mr. Tim Burke.
Yeah.
Steve Carl here. Sitting on this matter, I would like to appoint the same people that sat on the first hearing, which I believe was myself, Mr. Ford, and Mr. McDonough. And I believe the alternate, Gary, was that you?
I, I don't recall.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the alternate will be Mr. Walker. Okay. Now, we'll hear from, we'll hear from the petitioner and/or their representative.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Carl Johnson. Borrow offices at 1245 Braintree Hill on this part of Suite 200. And I appear on behalf of Arista Development Company, LLC. With me this evening, a number of project professionals, including Scott Waymoth, who's a principal with Arista Development Company, Doug Benoit, Registered Professional Engineer with Arista Development Company. I believe that Julie Barry, Litigation Counsel from Prince Fabel Thai LLC, may be here this evening. Bradley McKenzie, Registered Professional Engineer from McKenzie Engineering Group. And Deborah Belseric, who's an architect and AIA from Anino Architects. At different times during this hearing, I would just ask them to join in the presentation and would also be available to answer any questions. As the board has pointed out, that the case before the board this evening is the same case but remanded from the land court with the instruction that we, that Arista may file a reman petition to reduce the former 35-unit building with five affordable or inclusionary housing units. The new petition or the reman petition is 30 units with five affordable inclusionary housing units, but have added that they are all age-restricted, 55 years of age or older. This is consistent with Mayor Corrus's intention to create 55-plus housing units to address community need. And as reported in the recent study involving the community, there's a clear preference for multi-family homeownership that is age-restricted. Reman petition reduces the number of units, building size, en masse, lot coverage, building coverage, the number of stories in the front and rear of the building and reduces parking demand. The petition also dramatically increases open space and open space for dwelling unit as required under Section 135, 701. The modifications presented with the project reman petition significantly to the two zoning provisions for which relief is requested. As the board indicated, Section 135, 701 is the number of stories. If the board may recall from the first hearing, empirical evidence supported by an affidavit and testimony by Bradley McKenzie PE that the subsurface soil in high groundwater conditions create an actual hardship that dictated, dictates the slab elevation of the parking garage under the condominium building, causing the nonhabitable garage level to be counted as a story. The petition, however, does, and this will be shown, is shown in the architectural plans, which will be explained by Deborah Belseric, that the building causing nonhabitable garage space would count it as a story, and the petition reduces the stories to three in the front along the Hancock Street frontage and to the rear, and two in the rear of the building. However, the middle of the building, as you will see from the architectural renderings, remains at four stor, with four stories. Section 135, 50705, multifamily dwellings. Although no property in South Braintree Square District as general business district can meet the 6,000 square feet for dwelling unit required for two-bedroom units and plus the 2,000 square feet for open space requirement. The reman petition does reduce the number of units to 30, with 25 of these units being the market rate units and five being affordable inclusionary housing units, and an increase of the amount of open space for dwelling by 46%. There was a comparison memo of the former in reman petition comparison, which was submitted with the application, which I know that the board has been copied with, and I'm not sure if that is, will be put on the screen. But the first comparison is to the number of stories, which bears on 135, 701. The former number of stories again were all four stories necessitated by the nonhabitable garage level being counted as a story. The reman number of stories, and I want to be clear on this and keep it as simple as possible, and the architect will explain it. But a story has been eliminated over the, the three units that are out front, the so-called, the front on Washington, Hancock Street, and are accessed individually from Hancock Street as well as from the garage. And, and two units have been eliminated from the rear, causing the rear and two units, if you will, to be three stories, which is two stories of residential units over the garage level. So that there's been a partial reduction in stories to the front and the rear of the building, and that's meant to address the exceeding the number of stories. But be clear, it was never proposed any more than three floors of residential units. It was only due to the soil conditions and groundwater that required, we could not go deep enough for the recessed garage, and what it caused is the additional story and violation of the ordinance. The second one is a comparison in number and character of dwelling units, and that bears on Section 135, 705. Again, the former number of dwelling units is 35, five subsidized affordable units and 30 market rate units. The new, the reman number of units is 30 age-restricted units, the five subsidized, and 25 market rate units, a reduction of five units. The open space per dwelling unit, again, under 135, 705, which requires 2,000 square feet per dwelling unit, although one achievable, try to do a calculation there for the open space per dwelling unit. The former open space per dwelling unit was 28%. And I might add that the general business district only requires 10% open space. It was 20%, 28%, and that amounted to 14,240 square feet or 406 square feet dwelling unit. The reman open space per dwelling unit is increased to 35%, or three and a half times as much open space as required in the general business district in the amount of 17,800 square feet or 593 square feet per dwelling unit, which is a 46% increase in open space per dwelling unit. The fourth comparison is of the building footprint area, which Brad McKenzie will speak to in a moment. The former building footprint area was 18,023 square feet. The reman area is 15,780 square feet or 2,240 square foot reduction in a total of 12 and a half percent reduction in, in the building footprint area. Excuse me. A comparison in the gross floor area of the building. The former gross floor area of the building was 67,910. The reman is 58,175. It was a 97,50 square foot reduction, or it amounted to a 14% reduction in the gross floor area of the building. Again, maximum building coverage on the former was 36%. The reman is 31. 5% reduction, comparison of lot coverage was 71.4%. Reman coverage, 65. A 6.4 reduction. And last, a comparison of number of parking spaces due to the lesser units. Formerly was 70 spaces required, 74 were provided. 60 spaces are now provided, excuse me, 60 spaces are required and 64 are provided. And that's a, a reduction of 10 spaces. I would ask that Brad McKenzie, if I think he's in the audience, that he would speak to the civil changes to the site, including the building footprint, parking, and open space, and he'll be available to answer any questions that the board may have. Mr. McKenzie?
Thank you, Attorney Johnson, Brad McKenzie, McKenzie Engineering Group. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Connor, do you have access to the, the plan set? Can you put those up on the screen?
Absolutely. Just give me one second, please.
Great. I'd like to start with Slide nine, which is a comparison. It's an overlay of the former plan and the reman plan.
That's not it.
There you go. As Attorney Johnson mentioned, there's a reduction in the footprint. And what you see in red is the, the outline of the footprint of the former plan. There's a reduction in about 12 and a half percent footprint area. You can see that there is a substantial reduction in the amount of building in the, the northwest quadrant of the site, the area that's closest to the residential B zoning district. Generally, the parking lot is the same configuration. The base, the slab elevation will be the same elevation as the former plan. That is the garage slab elevation. There, if you compare the two plans, there will be a substantially more landscape area between the parking area and the main lobby entrance. What's not shown on the comparison plan in red, you see the retaining wall in the northern, it's like a finger, finger-like projection of the site that abuts the residential zone. You can see a proposed patio that's kind of like a semicircle. Well, that red line is a retaining wall that was proposed to, Phil was proposed to be placed adjacent to that retaining wall, and a substantial patio area was proposed in the original plan. About 1,600 to 1,800 square feet, no longer proposed to be built. So a lot more green space in that portion of the site, which abuts the residential zone as well. The, Carl went through all of the dimensional requirements. Lot coverage, I'm not sure if covered. There'll be a reduction from 71.4% in lot coverage to 65% for the reman plan. And of course, with the reduction in the number of units, the number of parking spaces was reduced from 74 to 64, reduction of 10 spaces. As Attorney Johnson mentioned, the, the soil and groundwater conditions are really what dictate the finished slab elevation of that parking level. In that we're proposed, they're not shown on the reman plan, but they're originally, the stormwater system was shown on the full plan set that the board reviewed last year. There's a subsurface infiltration system proposed within the, the southern portion of the site under the parking area, and the elevation of that system in order to meet the two-foot separation required under the state stormwater management regulations. We, the parking lot, in, in, in order to provide the one foot, of two feet of cover over that system, the parking lot needed to be at a certain elevation, which of course dictated what the finished elevation of the parking garage to be. So, but again, all the stormwater management systems will be, will be designed or have been designed to meet the state and local stormwater management standards. If you look at the zoning chart on C1, you can see that some of the other changes, all of the, we meet all of the dimensional requirements for the general B, general business district, with the exception of the, the variances that Carl mentioned in his presentation. I guess with that, should I, will there be any questions? Or should we continue with the architect's presentation?
I have a couple of questions, if I may, on the, where the retaining wall is on the, on the left-hand side of my picture on the screen. How many feet between the parking space in that retaining wall?
I believe it's about five, five feet. Five to six feet.
Now, there was no way you could bring those parking spaces in closer to the building and further away from the retaining wall. You said that was the side of the residential dwellings. Am I correct?
The residential zone, yes.
Are there any dwellings to the left of that?
No.
No.
Okay. Was there any way for you to bring in, bring the parking spaces closer to your building and further, a little further away from that retaining wall?
It would be very difficult to still provide the required 64 spaces.
Okay.
As it, as it was, we did, we did relocate. In comparison to the, the original plan that you reviewed last year, there were more spaces closer to the residential zone. So we were able to move some of those away with the reduction in parking by 10 spaces.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question for now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, Brad. I just want to point out, the intent here is the residential street is Frederick Road, which is up at the, the top of the C1 plan. That right now, what was, in 2005, this portion was rezoned, a portion of what was done by the council. There is a restriction of 35 feet from that, from the, it's that's the Iordanov parcel of Mayor and Tatiana Iordanov, which I've dealt with quite a bit of time. And what it does, it shows that from the corner of the building, before there's any building, this is just a flat patio. You can see this will all be green space. It will not be a structured green space. It will be either lawn or vegetation planted. This is 90 feet away from anything that, it's 89 and change, 10 away. And that's one thing we did. Also, one of the things that initially Mayor Sullivan and the planning department wanted was that there be no, we eliminated parking here on this side of the property. In the rear here is the Braintree Manor and former nursing home and so forth, their parking lot. They own all this other land, or they abuts this. So that the closest residential abutter is the Iordanov parcel here. And that's why all of this emphasis has been maintaining and exceeding what we had tried to accomplish before with the open space. But that is something that's been important over, since 215 that we've been involved here to maintain that commitment. So I think this plan does that, even though it may be in here. I think Brad would say there's a big grade difference here as this climbs up. So that, that's why that retaining wall is, is in fact necessary. I think the parking area has been expanded so that it's a better turn that goes directly into the, you know, parking under as well. So I just wanted to make that comment. If Deborah Belseric is, is here, she'll review the pertinent modifications to the structure, reduction in the building mass and design, and explain the reduction in stories better than I did. Also, the material and traditional details incorporated into the building design. I want to point out, too, that this is, this relief is only the first step, that this project will be, have to undergo a special permit in site plan review, which a lot of these things that you may have questions on will be dealt with. So I think it's appropriate that, you know, if, if in fact this goes, if you have questions, that they will be answered in that review process as well.
I, I have another question or two. Since they are going to be condominiums, are there going to be any amenities associated with the condominiums?
I think that there have been some changes in the building. The building is not finalized. I think Deborah Belseric can answer that. We had, if you recall, on every level, some kind of a community room or some area. I think that in order to shrink the size of this footprint and reduce it, that some of that may have been eliminated. But if she's there, I think she can best answer that question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Deborah, are you there?
Yes. Hello. Good evening. Would you like me to start with addressing that question, or shall I?
You start, where you want to start.
Okay. Well, good evening, and thank you all for your time and for listening to our presentation. We've worked diligently to maintain some of our original goals, which are centered around maintaining a pedestrian streets, streetscape feel to the neighborhood by reducing the height of the building. We've made sure to incorporate traditional materials and a traditional look that we think is congruous with the surrounding areas such as brick and clapboard. And we have worked really hard to essentially reduce the size of the project. So it might be helpful, Connor, I believe it might be page 10 of 11 that shows the former and the reman. Yep, there we are. So in the front and the rear of the building, we've essentially eliminated a story. So there are three floors of residential units. The first floor of residential units is at the same level as the parking garage. And therefore, it's accessible from Hancock Street and it's accessible from the parking garage. And then there are two levels, as opposed to three levels, that we are proposing with the revision to this plan. We've also tried to enhance the elevation by incorporating and simplifying the, the stronger points of the elevation, which is the main entrance. And we still have the, the two gables echoed on either side of the center elevation. So I think in general, it gives the appearance as well as in actuality. It's a reduced scale. In the rear, we went from, in a similar way, it is one story reduced so that there's parking garage and then two floors of residential units. And in the And in the, uh, I'm gonna call it the middle section, but essentially the units that are. Sandwiched between the front elevation and the rearmost units. Um, those are the u- those are uh. The units that essentially have four floors of units, so those are less changed than the. Than the front and the rear. I also want to just point out uh, that in the front elevation. That we originally had twelve feet at the base and then two stories of ten feet. Uh, unit. And uh. We reduced the third floor to eight feet, so like that uppermost. Uh, unit will have like a slanted ceiling on the inside, but it helps to lower the. Uh, roof plane, so again, like at a pedestrian level or from a distance, it's the, the. The uh, overall building appears to be at a reduced scale. Um. Okay, I think Brad went over some of the other points. Um, in terms of parking, I, I, oh, there was one question about common spaces, so uh. Let's see, it might be helpful if you went to what is uh. Not the ground floor, but um. Not sure if we're referring to that as the first floor or the second floor. I think that's the plan. Yes, this is the one. Uh, on the, uh, bottom left corner. We have created a larger common space area. That has the flexibility to serve in a variety of ways. So um, that would be uh. See, I think you can see it kind of has like a. Uh, three different zones of uh, function there for the, for the residents. In the building, so we did need to um. Instead of ha- providing common space on every single floor. We went to a, a common space that was located on this floor. As a way to help reduce the square footage.
How big is that space?
Uh. I could, I could give you some rough dimensions, if you bear with me, I. Need to uh, reference my CAD plan, but um. If you want, I can do that while.
If you can.
I'll either move on.
Square footage will be, if you can give me a square footage.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that, so. I don't know if you wanna maybe just, if, if you wanna circle back to any other topics or any other questions on the project and then I can get back to, it's just gonna probably take. That to um, access the other screen and.
Sure.
My CAD plan and.
Yeah, do you have any other amenities in the building other than the common space? Like for instance, a, a workout room?
Uh, well, the, the second floor space can be used, uh, however. The building chooses to use it, so it could, there, again, it's separated into. Three zones, so a portion of it could be used as a workout space. Um, a portion of it could be used as a space where tenants can. You know, just gather for activities or potentially reserve the space for. Uh, their own personal. You know, personal gatherings. So there's explicitly a space that's specifically delegated. As exercise, however it could be, should you wish, but I think the general feeling is that. Uh. You know, the more flexible the space is, the better as. Unit see, or tenant see fit to use the space.
No, I, look, I understand. I understand it's a smaller building. Than some of the larger condominiums that have more amenities, so I was just curious as to what's provided, that's all.
Okay. And I'll get you a square footage on that as the evening progresses, if that's okay.
You couldn't, could you have a sock hop in that uh, in that space?
Um. Well, a, a small gathering, wine probably, yes.
Okay.
The, the ri- the rear, the uh, the face that uh, is. At the exterior face is sort of reserved as a larger um. Not labeled space that I think could potentially serve as a. Gathering space, whether it be for, you know, a dancing class or um. Bingo night or whatever, whatever might be appropriate.
Okay. I guess for me, that's all for now. Does anybody else have any further que- Michael or Richard?
I'm good for right now, thanks Steve.
Not, not at this time, Steve.
Okay, thanks. Anything else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, ju- just wanted to touch base uh, on a couple of things. And talk about the benefits of this project um, to the community. I wanted to point out, as the board may recall, the former petition was not objected to by any notice to abutters. Was supported by abutting business property owners and businesses along the Hancock Street uh, neighborhood corridor. The position is the result of a joint motion by um, the town in Arista. To the land court and I just want to discuss some of the benefits of the project. One, addresses a social need for fifty-five. Uh, eight years and older condominium project in Braintree, something that they. In discussions with the mayor previously, that he felt was appropriate and mentioned it in his campaign. Uh, the, uh, to address a need for inclusionary housing that is not required. Within the Braintree zoning ordinance. Uh, but that is something that was committed to earlier and it was incorporated in the remand order, so. That has, th- that will uh, continue, I want to point out that. Those affordable units, um, you know, when you look at it, this is really a twenty-five unit. Uh, development of market rate and that carries uh, the cost because the five units. Based upon eighty percent of the average mean income. Really uh, does not, um, you know, it may pay for its, for the, the. For the construction costs of the unit, but it doesn't go to the total construction cost and overhead. Of what's being met, so it is a form of subsidy, but it's something that. At fifteen percent of the number of units, it's something the planning board had stated early on, it's something that um. Uh, was part of the agreement in, uh, for the remand as well as representations to this board in the past. Uh, this will provide quality, high-end condominiums, and I think last time we spent more time on the types of finishes. Interior to these buildings, this is uh, the inside of, uh, excuse me, the units are large. And maybe Deborah can help me out on that, but they have increased in size a little bit. I think the average may be close to thirteen hundred now um, for an individual unit. And it's primary concern, as, as Deborah mentioned, is the streetscape, a lot of attention has been paid. Uh, both by, demands by Mayor Sullivan and uh, the planning board. And uh, the new administration about what this is gonna look like on the streetscape. Um, in that you'll see that it is designed to be, I guess that, as Melissa calls it, a walk-up unit. And it gives a connection, a connectivity uh, to the street scene uh, at the edge of the village, and we hope that it precipitates. Um, some other uh, uses which would have a similar theme. But it also is very walkable. Um, to support South Braintree uh, Square Village shops. Service establishments and restaurants. Yeah, in the South Braintree Square and on the Hancock Street corridor. The corridor is a mixed-use corridor, across the street is uh, Braintree lumber. Those areas are all zone commercial or industrial, um. Needs to be changed, uh, there is a hundred-foot strip of. Of general business district, and in the back they have Residence B, which is all too common in Braintree. So that the lots are in more than one district, uh, so-called split lots. I know that the chair mentioned that in the initial uh, description, that was uh, determined by. Uh, the building inspector as well as John Gold Rosen to qualify, so this is all under a general business district. Um, zoning. Uh, this also importantly uh, provides new growth. Um. Something that hasn't occurred uh, recently in Braintree. And that it's uh, earnestly needed as well as uh, real estate tax revenue, again, these are all condominiums, homeownership. Um, in that they will produce revenue uh, to the town. And they'll have little or no impact on public schools or other town services. I might add that um, over a year ago, that um, Arista. Brought across Hancock Street prior to its resurfacing and refurbishing. Um, a rebuilding of Hancock Street, it brought new sewer, water, gas. And electric services to the site, so the site is already uh, ready and connected and brought onto the property. Uh, that was an expense that uh, Arista chose to bear now, rather than trying to wait five years uh, to interrupt the uh. Repaving of the street. Uh, the new con. And last, I wanted to, you know, something that is. Close to me because I made a lot, because we've been working with uh, some of the residents for. Uh, one in particular for a number of years, the increased green space in Buffer. Uh, to the nearest abutter and to that side of the, the, the project. Uh, the parking area is more spatial on the other side and parking is not. On that side, what you're going to see coming down from Hancock Street. Is a building, I think it has a nice design and even has a small porch or portico. On one side, even coming down from South Braintree Square, and it's all green space, the landscaping we showed last time. But that's going to, in the, in the initial presentation, but that's a detail that will be dealt with in the special permit and site plan review. Um, I do think that this project has an awful lot of benefits. And no real detrimental impacts. Um, I would point to the thirty condominiums that are at one forty-five. Um, Hancock Street, that was not before this board, it was a conversion, a nursing home conversion that the planning board dealt with. But I will tell you, and the planning board, I believe the staff will avail. There has been no impact from those thirty units. And that um, it's, you know, they don't, they don't sell regularly, so it shows that it's a, it's successful, they're much smaller. Um, I don't believe there's any affordable units in there, it, there may be. But um, I do think that this, this condominium project. Um, the way it's designed, the materials, traditional with brick. Party plant, um, clapboards, the details, um, and it would really be a, an asset to the area. And I don't think that it will in any way derogate from the public welfare and convenience, uh, and that the public will. Substantially be served in this mixed-use neighborhood. Um, the request of the board to allow, we request the board to allow variance. That um, other projects in the town have received affirmative, um, and received affirmative um. Uh, variances for, and I'll mention seven through eleven Quincy Avenue, I can mention a couple of others recently. But this is post, this is planned, it was planned to be an integral part. Of the south end of the um, South Braintree Village. In anything, it's still on the Hancock Street corridor, which really deserves um, a real short neon with this vacant lot in one small. Uh, cave house next to it. I know it will be a change, but I think it'll be a change for the better. I've had a lot of individuals uh, indicate and social media has also stated. That they wish there were fifty-five and older, a development in Braintree that was a quality, um, you know, appointed as well as. Well-designed, that would give them access to uh, some of the life and stuff. And I, I do believe it will be an asset. The little enforcement of this chapter uh, would, would. The little enforcement of the provisions of this chapter, the zoning ordinance, would involve a substantial hardship to the. A petition of both financial and otherwise. And uh, Brad McKenzie has pointed out that the site can, soil conditions. High ground.
Excuse me.
Shape with that dogleg right, which we, isn't used, but is used as a portion of landscaping. The grade conditions do not generally affect, that don't generally affect the other properties in the um. Neighborhood. That relief can be granted um. You know, instance, without an impact or detriment to the public good, so. We asked with, that you would consider that, we're willing, we uh, look forward to answering any of the board's questions. But I do think that this is something that uh, as the board pointed out, did not have a lot of opposition. Until a recent election, and I understand that, but I do think times have changed, the town realizes it needs additional revenue. If you're gonna invite something into the town, something that people in the town, nenty nesters. May be attracted to, I think it's something that we should provide as other housing opportunities. Uh, I want to stress, this is not a forty-B project. And because it's affordable, you know, if you're gonna put a forty-B on here, you would. Have a lot more units, I thought we, the units that are requested, the market units. Uh, will carry this project and it will be a severe hardship if in fact, given the cost of this development. And the time involved, that um. Uh, it really does uh, present a hardship and that's why. Um, we were really happy that it was a uh, a remand petition, give us another opportunity to discuss it with the board.
I'll, a couple of questions from me, please, a couple more. You're gonna have, you're gonna have reserved spaces for guests?
Uh, we have, um, I, I will say this, when, this is parked two per unit. Uh, one per bedroom, and there are, there are four additional um, guest spaces, we think that. Typically exterior, not everyone in there is going to have two cars. But we think that um, in that it factors that in the two per bed, two per unit. But um, there will be no, there'll be areas out there, we can reserve them. But the handicap spaces, you look at some of them, are outside closest to the elevators. This is serviced both by um, a stair corridor and elevators which go all the way, so that. We're keeping the handicap spaces as close to possible. Uh, Scott, um, or, or Doug Winoy can answer what they're going to do about the um. Reserved spaces and parking.
My next question would be uh, with the outdoor space, is any, will any of it uh, be. Used for uh, for instance uh. Grills for the residents to use outside. Or anything of that nature in the summertime or springtime?
Uh, you'll note there is one area that is on that uh, protrusion or dogleg, if you want to call it. There is a patio there that's circular in nature, it's, it's. Smaller than the other one, but that is something that's in there. I'm not sure about the balconies, I think Deborah uh, can answer that, or else Scott, wait a minute.
I, uh, grills on the outside of a balcony can sometimes be, be a danger. Um. But I, I was just curious for.
We had.
On the outside patio area or somewhere out there.
At one point they had a kitchen and that went out to a deck here, and that there was uh, some of those activities available. I'm not sure what this consists of now and, and maybe the uh. Development man to that.
Well, I guess the condominium trust can provide for one, once they get sold, I don't know. Okay, I guess that, oh, that's right now, Michael, any questions?
No, sir, thank you.
Richie, any questions?
No, Steve, no questions at this time.
All right, now let me go to Gary and Timmy, any questions from our associate members?
No, sir. Not, not pertaining to this evening's presentation, no.
Not, not pertaining to this evening's presentation, no.
Okay, thank you, Tim. All right. Who else did you want to have explain something, Carl? Was there somebody else?
No, I think that, you know, that we can, we will just look forward to answering any questions. Unless Arista wants to, you know, answer any questions about outdoor activities, I don't. I don't think we've gotten to that far since the remand. It was only on October sixteenth. And really tried to use best efforts to come up with a reduced scale plan.
Well, let me say you have reduced the plan. The first plan was architecturally pleasing. And I think this plan is architecturally pleasing also. So, and I, I don't, I know I did not read into the record that I believe that the planning staff I think they were in favor of this project.
I, I think that the staff report is particularly clear and thorough. And that, you know, I did not, I was going to intentionally mention that I wasn't going to reiterate what's in the staff report. But it's, they spent a long time, they upgraded it from the last time or the prior, the former petition. And I do think that they met with us, they asked us a lot of questions. So that their staff report, I, I think is well-stated. I didn't want to re, you know, reiterate it. I could hit the highlights with it if you want.
No, I, we, we can read. I just usually read. But it was, in my, in my opinion, it, it was favorable in nature.
That was a strong endorsement if you want to know the truth.
Connor, do you want to, Melissa, do you want to add anything to the report or say anything about your report?
Basically, really the reports, I edited some of the some of, you know, the coverages and stuff like that have changed since last time. I mean, essentially, you know, it's, it's a little bit more of a smaller building than was proposed beginning. I know this department as well as the town have, have met with Arista for plenty of years so far. And, you know, this, this thirty-unit multifamily residential building, age restricted as well, will definitely complement the square, definitely will. You see a lot more landscaping, you know, as much before, there's less pavement, less parking. It allows for the building to assimilate into the square rather than sprawl out. As you see with other developments, condensing it, allowing the parking underneath, allowing for the walkout units to Hancock Street creates more of that village square atmosphere. Than a, you know, standard, you know, sprawl type development. But I mean, it's the same relief. It's, you know, that they're requesting as the last time, it's just a little bit more smaller than original.
I think as requested by, by the board that in, intimated that initially we thought it was too large for the, for the lot and has come down a bit. And I might add, and this is, and as, as you know, I put everything, what I'm thinking on the record. I think everybody on the board qualifies for fifty-five and older on that. But I'm glad. But I'm, I'm glad to see that this would be, and I think the first fifty-five and over. If it is approved, building in Braintree per se. So if it is approved, you may want to put a plaque on there. Saying it's the first, and I hope not the last. That being said, I, I guess I don't have any other questions. If anybody else does, just let me know and go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to add to Connor's remarks about the proposal. And basically, our main goal in reviewing this reman proposal was to highlight and ensure that the revisions to the proposal were in response to the concerns that were, were raised last time. And those were size of the building. Some members had concern about the height. And I think the applicants done a fair job in trying to address those through the roof line, through the architecture, and to removing, you know, five units. As noted by Attorney Johnson, the reductions in the zoning criteria are, are substantial. And I think warrant, warrant some merit, you know, to the, to the developer for making those changes. Whether or not the board supports these, I, I truly think he heard, heard those concerns. And it shows in, in the drawings.
All right, well, I guess we'll find out in a couple of minutes. Anybody else? No? Connor, any, I saw there were twenty-seven participants. Does anybody want to testify or support the project or oppose the project?
So Chairman Carl, go to the public side of it on our attendance. So far, we have two hands raised. I'm going to allow Mr. Kelly Moore to speak. Mr. Moore, can you hear me?
I'm muted.
You're unmuted now, sir.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much to the folks from Arista coming back in and reducing their plans. And it looks good. It looks like a very nice development, et cetera. My primary concern is this, the density of the project is still two and a half times zoning, hence why they're before the ZBA. Even I get that, folks, but the problem not just that, and it might seem to fit the size and scope of the one and a half acres that it would be sitting on, but my question is this. If this is approved, it sets a precedent. And I heard Attorney Johnson's comments about the condos over one thirty-five Hancock Street and I don't know what's at seven eleven Quincy Avenue, but I, I certainly agree that it's not as onerous on the development structure within Braintree. In terms of, you know, it's et cetera, and traffic may not be that significant, the positive effect of a fifty-five plus community. The twenty, twenty-five plus five, I think is nice. But two and a half times density set the precedent. So how does the ZBA look at that? Is each, do you look at each development separately that comes before the board? Or are we in danger of, you know, a future onslaught of developments that are coming before Braintree, before the ZBA, two and a half percent, three and a half percent, five percent above the current allowable zoning regulations? And so, you know, even Carl, Attorney Johnson, mentioned two developments that were precedent-setting. So it, that's an issue. That's an issue. So, you know, the, 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 the analogy of the camel's nose under the tent, et cetera, still pertains here. So and frame, that'd be great.
I can try to answer that, and I'm going to beat Mike Ford to the punch. We take each project individually as it comes based on its merits. And each lot is different. And if you thought I sat here and did a percentage of how many times, two and a half times bigger than, than allowed, you're wrong. I, I don't, I don't sit here with a calculator and do that. And I know, and I know Mr. Ford will, will say the same thing. We take each project individually and based on its merits because they're all different. Every one of them has a different issue and structure to it. So if I'm wrong, I, I remain to be corrected, but I don't think I am.
Well, if you, if you were to take it from a legal perspective, of course, courts usually side, come down on the side of precedent, don't they?
Depends. Cases, yes, but not zoning. Each zoning is different. And
Okay.
As we say in the courthouse, we don't let the facts get in the way. That's just, just a little humor there, but
I do have one last question. This is really critical. What in the heck is a sock hop?
You're too, you're too young if you don't know what a sock hop is.
Even I had a sock hop.
Yeah.
The mulch, yeah.
All right, but
No, but that's, that's the answer, Kelly. Everything is taken individually and separately. Because everything is, every, every case is different. Every piece of property is different. Every set of, every set of buildings are different. So that, that's my answer, and I'm sticking to it.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Kelly. Anybody else, Connor?
We have Counselor Sasha. I'm going to allow him to talk. Just one second, please. Counselor, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, Stephen, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Good, thanks.
It's nice to see you all again. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I did, I did just have a couple of points of concern about this that continue to be concerns of mine that some of which I raised last time. This was before the board. But in two thousand thirteen, when Mr. Johnson stood in front of the town council to ask for this parcel to be rezoned, he stated at the time that it would make a good opportunity for a new neighborhood business development. That would be consistent with the other parcels in this area. A thirty-unit residential complex is entirely inconsistent. Now, they're here tonight asking for several variances, and some I think are completely justified based on the case that they presented. So so the water table, I think you can make a legitimate argument about the height variance, but one that they have provided no linkage for is the density variance. Now, this lot would allow for eight and a half units under the Braintree bylaw. They're asking for thirty, but they have in no way tied that to the shape or topography of the, of the land. And I think they should have to do that because thirty is based entirely on what they're looking to build. Right? So why not thirty-five? Why not fifty? Mr. Johnson points out that thirty-unit structures under the current bylaw would require four acres, which is not available in the general business district. But there is no parcel in the general business district that would allow fifty units or a hundred units. That doesn't mean that we make every parcel buildable with fifty or a hundred units just because there aren't any big enough to accommodate it. A couple of points about section one thirty-five, four oh seven. Now, Mr. Johnson points out that this project would benefit the public welfare. And it's great that that's his opinion on this. But there's no, they have provided no evidence that this would, that this would enhance the public, public welfare. And they have tried a couple of times, and, and I'm a little disappointed to hear the planning department agreeing with this. The notion of tying this into the South Braintree Village District. Because that was all proposed as part of the comprehensive zoning update. And it was categorically rejected by the residents. This is not part of the village center. Now, they might want to make it that, and that is why we're having a master plan steering committee. But at the moment, it is not that. And you can't use that as a reason to make this bigger than what's allowed. Second, variances can only be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the chapter. Now, the intent and purpose of section one thirty-five, seven oh five is to limit density. It's not to limit size. It's not to prohibit multifamily housing. It is specifically to limit density. So you cannot grant a variance here without derogating from the intent of that chapter. I just don't think it's possible. Lastly, I would just say that you know, Mr. Johnson also pointed out that the parcels big enough to accommodate thirty units are not available in the general business district, South Braintree Village District, or mixed-use Hancock Street corridor. But by stating that, he's actually admitting that this, that the smaller natures of the parcel in this area are common to all the parcels in this area. And one of the, one of the requirements of granting a variance is that it can only be granted when the hardship does not generally affect the zoning district in which it is located. Mr. Johnson has admitted that this issue affects all the parcels in this district. So I think for those grounds, the ZBA should deny this request. And lastly, I would just like to address the representatives of Arista. Briefly, because there is another project that has just been proposed in Braintree that is forty-four units. It includes eleven affordable units, and it has been met with enthusiastic support from residents and civic associations. Now, why is that one being met with enthusiastic support? Well, a couple of things I might suggest would be that five units would change, five affordable units in this project would change our subsidized housing inventory from nine point six nine percent to nine point seven one percent. But if you went up to eight units, we would get nine point nine percent. That would be a huge benefit to the town. You know, this, the planning department might think that this architecture is great. But this is creating a forty-one-foot-tall wall on Hancock Street. Where there are currently trees. This creates an enormous wall. I think a lot of people will not like this design. And lastly, you know, I think if you really were serious about trying to tie this into the Braintree Village, you'd think about some kind of mixed use to connect what is currently a commercial area into the square. Now, are these things that would make the residents really like this project? I don't know. But my main point here is that Arista, you don't know either. You have never held a community meeting. You have not reached out at all to the civic organizations. If you really want to work with Braintree, your website is full of language about, what does it say? "You develop based on trust and integrity as well as your ability to maintain relationships with communities." You have made no effort to establish any kind of relationship with the residents of Braintree. And I would ask before the ZBA even decides on this, that Arista withdraw this and have a public meeting. Talk to the residents and find out what they want this area to be. Because it's a critical area of town. As everybody said, it's in between a commercial area and the square. And it's important, and I think it's important to hear from the residents on it. Thank you.
Stephen, where is that project you were speaking of? I haven't heard of it.
That's the new one on Allen Street. It's beautiful. It includes all kinds of walkways for pedestrians, riverfront access, eleven affordable units.
Oh, I know what you mean.
Architecture.
The old bell plant.
Yeah.
Which is a hazardous, has hazardous waste and it's in a flood zone. So, good luck.
Yeah, that property is clean. That property is clean.
Okay, it wasn't the first time they looked at it. Maybe no one did a thing. One of the problems with the property is, is I, I shouldn't be inter, interjecting here.
Carl, do you want to, do you want to answer Mr. Fager's questions? Opposition?
I did two large residential projects under forty B, which were friendly forty Bs. Reservoir crossing and, and on Commerce Drive, which is Turtle Crossing. And both of those were large highway business district. Or in this case, they were both industrial zone properties, which met which met one three five, seven oh five. One three five, seven oh five was designed prior to Mr. Sasha being a resident uh, by a group in the planning board that was to stop development of any multifamily dwelling. You cannot build multifamily dwellings with five thousand square feet per studio or one, six thousand square feet for a two, and seven thousand square feet for a three-bedroom unit. Um, in this case, the property would have to be over two hundred and forty thousand square feet to meet both. That, plus they added two thousand square feet of open space for dwelling units. Mr. Sasha is wrong in that what, many ti- many years ago, and everybody that was building, uh, continued to build units, and it was done by zoning variances. I objected, um, at, uh, I was a new town meeting member when that first went in, and I objected to that, and I objected very strenuously to something that affected the Highlands more than any place else, and that was the watershed protection district, which wasn't scientific. Neither was this, and the courts have recognized when they look at this that this lacks uniformity. It's okay in the larger districts, highway business, or else commercial. But when you have fifteen thousand square foot lots that meet the minimum requirement in, in general business district, and you're trying to create a square, um, the, it's unattainable to do that. And I don't think anyone should lecture a developer who's spent so much money, time, and effort to put in a workable project. When that first came in in two thousand thirteen, it was finally passed, and I believe it was in two thousand fifteen, um, what we said was it would disunify it. When you don't, when you go into a, a zoning, a rezoning project under forty A, section five, you don't specify any particular use. What you do is you unify the zone. This was a split lot, and the zoning board of appeals on this site, and Mr. Carl was a member of the zoning board of appeals, approved approximately two hundred and fourteen units of age-qualified housing by the Patavina family. And that di- didn't go. It was very dense, and I understand that. It's been vacant since. It's a vacant lot, and this is not a park, as described a moment ago. And I do think that, um, one has an opinion about what's going to go. I mailed out to the neighborhood and noticed the Butters, tried to get them to come to a meeting, and as the board, uh, commented on the first, uh, public hearing, it was the first time they never heard from any of Butters, one way or the other, on, on, on this matter, other than being in favor of it, because it's the nature of where the business is located. This is not, you know, the Belt site, there's been a site that is, uh, that Mayor Sullivan had targeted previously for development. I'm glad something's happening. It's on the riverfront. It has, it impacted heavily during certain occasions by floodplain. This is impacted by groundwater, and this was really culled out of a hill that was, uh, part of Dyer's Hill at one time, and that's what's happened. This is an old site. Paul Revere's son used to own the property. He used to go all the way to the Manatequod River. But that's all about history. The history that counts is that we have inoperable, uh, zones. If you're going to have it in the general business district, it should reflect a smaller scale and be able to have some units so that you can build. So, that's my comment, and I don't think it pertains to this, because, uh, the previous speaker doesn't have any experience with this site that I've had for a number of years and worked with the Butters, and we haven't had anybody that has been opposed. So, and by the way, we did contact and have copied, um, District Five Councilor Meredith Bericky, uh, with these matters as well. It's been a short time since the remand, and clearly the court felt that it, uh, you know, it, it felt it was, um, because of what the town represented and what ARISTA said, that it went wrong to the remand hearing. So, um, I respect Mr. Sasha's opinion, um, but you can't stop everything. You can't stop new growth. And the big difference is the other town wants to see that developed. It's a town site. Um, you know, and I think it has some benefit to it. I do think that Quincy Avenue on a, on a barren piece of property located on the river, if it can be done, uh, environmentally, then that's fine. Um, but I don't think it's a comparable site to this, this, this site.
Okay, anything else?
I wonder how much, I don't know, I don't even know the square footage of that. I don't know how many multiples that is. If you really want to have a program in your zoning for inclusionary housing, why doesn't the counselor have one? If he really wants to do something about uniformity in districts, why doesn't the counselor move forward? Forty R was the biggest objection from people. It wasn't other things. And most of the time, zoning is very difficult to understand. I respect the, the opinion of the board. Each project is taken on its own merit. We think that we have, uh, done as much as can be done with this site and still build, um, uh, the project. And we've had support of the town, yeah, as, as well in this, so.
Okay. Connor, is there anybody else that wants to speak?
Um, Crystal Evans, I'm gonna promote her right now. Crystal, you have to unmute. There you go.
Yep. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
You, um, and Connor, my daughter says hi. You're the Maps Man.
I said hello.
Okay, um, I, I'm Crystal Evans. I live right in South Braintree Square, about a block from this location, and I wanted to, um, speak on behalf of the project. I'm in full support of this. Um, I moved to this neighborhood specifically because of the amount of amenities there are, um, the access to public transit. Everything is in wa- within walking distance. Um, and from the senior housing standpoint, or fifty-five plus, um, these are critical things. When I've seen other projects around town been proposed, um, delivery at Grove Street, um, Ninety Pond Street, and other areas, um, I did live in senior housing for seven years through my twenties, because that's where they put people in wheelchairs. Um, so I actually have lived experience in senior housing, um, with just a different perspective than a lot of people would get because I was in the environment. Um, and there's so much that being in this location would have to offer to seniors in our community, um, being able to walk to the grocery store. Even simple things such as the sidewalks and the road out front are very level. For people that are aging, um, using walkers or canes, or that have mobility issues, knee issues, hip issues, having a level sidewalk just to be able to go out front and go for a walk, uh, um, right near your own home is ideal. Um, and I say that as somebody who lived on senior housing in a hill, trust me. I also want to point out its location with public transit. Not only does it benefit people who choose or need to stop driving depending on age or disability, um, but also for home care workers. We have a big shortage in CNAs, home health aides, and homemakers, and PCAs in the South Shore area because people can't take these jobs because of our lack of affordable housing. Many of the workers that work in the South Shore, especially in the Braintree area, are using public transit. So for senior housing to have a bus stop literally right out front and another bus line within a block, and being walking distance to the T is a huge asset versus other areas where workers would have to work a lot farther. It would be a lot harder from a healthcare standpoint to service people in senior housing for home care services. Um, that, that is huge. Um, and I do work in health policy. That's, I do a lot of review on this. Um, and, um, I think overall that this is a huge benefit to that area. Um, I pass it daily. Um, the empty lot, it definitely needs something, and I feel like the characteristics of the building and the design, um, will be um, fantastic for the space it's in, and it's also similar to a lot of the buildings surrounding it on Hancock Street. Um, that is all.
Ms. Evans, isn't fifty-five the new twenty? I don't know.
Totally.
Um, so you, you, you take opposition to what Mr. Sasha said?
Strong opposition, yeah. Sorry, Steve, but, um, yeah, as somebody who's lived in senior housing is very familiar with the needs of seniors in a housing space, it's like, this is one of the, this is the best senior housing project I've seen pitched since moving here. I did a lot of affordable housing work when I lived in Somerville as well, so, um, but this location, I don't think you could find a better location in Braintree for seniors. Even, I mean, if you're looking at, uh, um, Allen Road area, there's still a hill on Quincy Ave. Once you're out of that immediate street, it's a hill, it's a walk, there's no grocery stores directly in that area. We have Shaws down the street. We have a lot of shopping. Um, to be able to get seniors out and active within the square is huge, um, as they age, or fifty-five plus. But, um, it's, I think, I think there's a lot of pros to providing housing directly in a square versus in neighborhoods where you just don't have an, and amenities at the immediate vicinity.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. I appreciate your, uh, your time. Is there anybody else, Connor?
Um, Counselor Bericky, just give me one second to.
When Ms. Evans was saying fifty-five of seniors makes me feel like a dinosaur.
Can you hear me, Connor?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, thanks for having me and thanks for holding this meeting tonight. Um, I'm, uh, Counselor Berica, the District Five Town Counselor, representing this area of, of town. Um, and unfortunately, because this prod- project was in the court system, we were unable to hold an official neighborhood meeting, um, with any kind of, um, notice. So what I did over this past weekend, once I got word from the mayor's office that this, uh, project was coming before the ZBA this evening, is I made phone calls to those constituents for whom I had numbers. And I spoke to many residents, um, in the surrounding neighborhood, so not just the Butters, because I believe the neighborhood expands beyond Hancock Street there, but on Hall Ave, Frederick Road, Crescent Ave, um, Myrtle, and Hancock, because it is really important to me to make sure that I am doing right by my constituents and representing their opinions and views. And I can tell you that what I heard from the residents in the neighborhood was support for this project. So there were some concerns, which I will get to in a minute, but I think it is really important to understand that right now there is a vacant lot. It is not a tree-lined park. Um, and the residents I spoke to talked to me about the former Hancock Street Market that was there years ago. And many had, were enthusiastic about fifty-five-plus housing, which is a need, um, not just in this neighborhood, but throughout the town. Additionally, this provides affordable housing, which is helping us to get closer to safe harbor and help us provide control over our growth and development. I spoke to business owners in the square and on Hancock Street that I was able to reach, and they were also in support of this project because it will provide foot traffic for their local small businesses, which are so vital to keeping the, the feel of South Braintree Square, and, and I would say by extension down Hancock Street to Riccardi's. Um, that is so critical to this part of town. Additionally, this will be a, a big improvement to the streetscape, um, with what now is a vacant lot, um, which really is not enhancing the neighborhood in any, in any way, shape, or form. So again, I want to make sure that folks know that, you know, the residents who are in the neighborhood and neighboring this, um, area that I was able to, to speak within reach, um, were, were, did not oppose this project. Um, the concerns I did hear, and I hope that I can work with ARISTA and the residents to address as this gets, if this gets further down the road, uh, was primarily around traffic, particularly left-hand turns coming out of Hancock Street, um, and several requests for an additional crosswalk and other visual cues to alert drivers of, um, increased pedestrian traffic. Um, so all in all, um, you know, I believe that this project adds up to what I would consider thoughtful development tailored to our town's needs. It checks a lot of ba- a lot of bo- boxes for us. Um, and I will be looking forward to, um, hosting broader neighborhood meetings when, when there is, uh, more than just a weekend to do so. But I do feel confident that, um, the re- again, the residents with whom I was able to speak, um, we can address their concerns over the long term, um, as it pertains to traffic um, in this very busy quarter of town. So thank you, and I wanted to make sure that, um, those, those voices were heard.
Thank you very much, Counselor, for calling in. Is there anybody else, Connor, that wishes to speak?
Uh, Mr. Moore has his hand raised.
He's had it raised once. We only, alright, we'll let him speak again.
Well, kind of you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, hi, Melissa. I saw that smile there. That was nice. Anyway, so, uh, I wanted to, uh, respond to some of the comments from, uh, Carol Johnson, I think, um, it was kind of interesting that I, I, you know, I, I appreciated the historical perspective from two hundred years ago with Paul Revere's son, but that has nothing to do with what we're talking about today. The precedent that this sets, um, is the major concern when the, uh, town council, most recent town councilor spoke about residents. Uh, i- it's hard to believe that, um, she had no idea that this was coming before you, uh, at this point in time. I'm not going to make it, uh, a, a personal attack there, but I do want it to be known that this, this has been a known project for the last several years. Um, knowing full well that ARISTA is trying to do their best to, um, meet the community needs. Uh, but community needs and, uh, impact are two different things. This is not a senior housing development. This is a fifty-five-plus development. And, uh, I think there's a big difference between the two. Uh, I love Crystal, and I appreciate her comments. Um, but the perspective should be adjusted to what the actual project is. The, um, the idea that we, we need to have, uh, uh, more development in Braintree obviously goes without saying, but we need to have appropriate development in Braintree. And I think the density here is clearly inappropriate. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Sasha's comments were well, well-spoken and thought out, and, uh, should be considered in, uh, as such, uh, as a contribution to this, uh, to this meeting. So, anyway, I, I stand by the precedent, uh, concern and issue and the density. And, uh, that's where we are. Thank you. Appreciate your op- the opportunity.
Thank you.
That's my last time I'm gonna speak tonight, Carl.
You promise?
I swear to God.
Okay. Connor, is there anybody else?
Um. No, there's only ten attendees, so.
Okay. Well.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, who's speaking?
Um, Mr. Johnson.
Oh, yes.
May- I just, a couple of brief responses. I'm surprised someone remembers the Hancock Market. It must be my age um, when they do that, but that is, it, it is an older neighborhood. Um, and South Braintree Square has a little bit different than other parts of the town, um, as it comes through. And I do think that it does need some investment, uh, in upgrading, uh, in a lot of respects. I really appreciate the comments from, uh, District Five Counselor, uh, and the housing advocate, um, as far as the handicap, um, accessibility. There is a bus stop directly across the street. Those are, a lot of those things can be dealt with in the site plan review and the special permit. But I do want to thank people because, you know, I, I have not had the opposition as I've talked to, uh, people about that. It's very easy to, um, you know, to pontificate about what, what the zoning should be and the density measures. But as you said, that each, each location is unique, and this is a unique location. Each, each thing, each, uh, project should be taken on its own merits. Um, what we were saying back, again, I think when this rezoned has no bearing on this, other than the fact that we said it should be rezoned for business use. That doesn't mean necessarily that I talked about a shop. It was, uh, the residential portion of it actually was given, granted a variance by this board, um, many years ago, but I felt it did not meet the standards of the bylaw, and, um, it was easier to rezone a small portion of the, um, land and keeping with the rest of the land, uh, And keeping with the rest of the land as uh business use. This area used to be divided a hundred feet from the street. It was a split zone uh as I said before. I do think that um. The residents of the area may be different in South Brantree Square uh than they are in North Brantree. And I would like to point out that um they mentioned Richardi's. Uh Richardi sent the letter in strongly supporting this um as a stimulus. Jim Richardi had been, uh Donato Richardi Junior. Had been a member for many years of the South Brantree Board of Trade. He's been involved in a lot of things. He was, used to be located in South Brantree. And, you know, there is, he, he deemed, gets a lot of business as to the other uh. Sandwich shops and so forth, the restaurants, the diner. Um Olympia Diner. Besides that, uh Brantree Rug people used to have um a lot more. Walkable activities to the square. One of the things that the mayor, former mayor Sullivan tried to do was extend the village district. Because he felt it was critical to go to the end of Hancock Street, uh what used to be known as Mary Ann's Corner. So that the connectivity to the square, the connectivity to the streetscape. I was glad to hear some of the comments from the councillor, that people recognize that. Because they do want to have a sense of community uh on the different squares. It's just like in the city of Quincy, where you all had squares that you uh were part of. Or whether it be Chelsea or any other community, Dorchester, South Boston. I mean, i- i- it's part of the community. And I do think that, I think it's arrogant. Uh quite honestly, to dictate to people what they should be concerned about and. I'm glad that you don't have a calculator that taxes at two point five for every uh project that um comes before you. I think we've done the best we can. I think it's a good project. Um we'd like to go to the next step. And maybe resolve some of the issues and put in there with the site plan review. Uh and if you have any suggestions. Um if you see fit to uh endorse this. And grant the zoning relief requested, that you can add those as conditions. And I thank you for your time. I think that uh. Um we've all asked good questions, we really had to address. And I remember Mr. Ford's question, the building was too big. He said three things and we really attempted to deal with the mass of the building to look. On the streetscape and still be supportive um of what the goal or the object um of this development is now. Thank you.
I also would like to add that. There were no abutters, or abutters to abutters within three hundred feet. That either sent something in or called in. Either in opposition or in favor. There was just nobody, other than Richardi's did send in a letter.
Uh they signed a four, four or five business owners signed a petition that was.
The last time, yes. And uh but nobody tonight has expressed no abutter, or abutter to a butter. Has expressed opposition to the scaled down. Uh project. That being said, if there are no other people in opposition or in favor. I'll close the public portion of the hearing. And open it up for discussion to the members of the board. So again, we, we have a project. That has come back to us in a scaled down position. Um so I'd like to hear from either Richie or and or Mike, uh see, see what you think. What do you? Richie, let me start with you. What do you think?
Sure. Uh this has been very informative. I appreciate, and I always listen to both sides. The reality is, this, this site I've driven by it since nineteen eighty, okay? And and I looked on the, the background with the permitting history from seventy-nine and eighty. And I've seen that site, and I remember they were taking down, which is say Hancock Market, which. I called Reds at one time, it was Reds Market. But, but to the end, when, when that was coming down, they said they're going to put something up really quick. They had to take it down. So. But the reality of listening to both sides here, and I do respect all sides. And with Mr. Moore, I I want to say to Mr. Moore. I've been on the board for seven years, I've followed the town business for many years. As a town meeting member and such, but we do take every case individually. Like every case stands on its own to, to back up, you know, Jim and Kyle has been no longer. Than all of us, but, but the reality is, and I know that uh member Ford's the same way, we take every case on its own. And even with some history in the courts. It, as Tim and Kyle said, while in the court, like, well, a case might have precedents sent, but not always. And not always, and it comes up to a reasonable person to decide. And, and on this, I respect Mr. Sasha's view and uh councillor Berica. On hers, and of course, you know, everybody that's, has spoken on this, and I do think. My view is that with the work that's been done. And the process that has been through. And going along with the reductions and the efforts that have been made to. Enhance it, to, to bring it down, to, to make it feasible. I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the project at this point. And I do say, one of the things I picked up on when people talk about the mitigation afterwards, that's not us, that's, that's planning, it's site plan review. Traffic, uh to be honest with you, I'm not concerned that much about traffic. I'm only concerned about pedestrian. Uh walkway, you know, it's something like that. And I said, that's not for us to decide because we're not there yet, but. But that's, when I see Foley's Ice Cream and I see, you know, right in the area and and I see those concerns, I, I would want. If this is approved, uh to have that paid attention to for safety, that's all. But I think they've done a good job and I, and, and. And other things could be mitigated later. So that's, that's all I really have to say and uh. We'll go from there.
Thanks, Richie. Mike?
Thank you, Steve. Um. So. I did use uh rather small words last time, saying the building was too big. Uh I still think the building's large. I- i- it's. A- and I don't want to say too large. I think it would have been more palatable to me had it come in. Uh at twenty units, let's say, and I'm, that's just an arbitrary number. I base that on nothing. Um but it would have been more, a smaller development would have been more palatable. That being said. This building will certainly be transformative to that area. Uh the developer came in, they, they took our objections from the last meeting. I think they took them seriously. They kept the integrity of the building, the look of the building. I do think it's a good-looking building from the street. Um the fact that it covers so much of the lot does concern me a little bit. I'd be lying to you if I said it doesn't. Uh but the fact that it's remanded back from the court, the court's asked us to take another look at it. I, I don't, and I said, the, I didn't dislike the last development either, other than the size of it. I know there was talk earlier on, um somebody had mentioned the idea of mixed-use development. And that's a term that's been kicked around a lot lately, that li- especially the last few years. Um I want to know where all these businesses are coming from to fill in the mixed juice. To, to do the business part on the, on the ground level, they're, they're just not there. Uh retail going away. Um and we have an over-reliance, an over-reliance of retail as far as our tax base is concerned in this town. Um and it's, it's a little bit scary looking at the future. Um and one more thing, if I could say, uh and I firmly believe this, i- if the town is not growing. It's dying. And quite frankly, we haven't been doing a lot of growing lately. So. As, as much as I, again, I would like this to be a smaller development. I, again, I thought it would be, it would be more palatable to me if it were. Uh I really have no major objections to this right now. And um we can, we can move forward, I think.
Thanks, Mike. Um Gary, do you want to add anything?
Uh yes, Mr. Chairman, if I could real quick. Um I do agree with Mike that maybe I would like it to be a little smaller. But at the same time, I do commend the developer for listening to us uh the first time around and understanding that it does need to be smaller. Also, they are providing a, a, a need in this town, which I think is fifty-five plus housing. Um like, like Michael said, don't know where these businesses are going to come from. Um a lot of things have changed in this world, but I don't think over fifty-five is going to change anytime soon. But um I do commend them and I um, I uh, I support the project. And for the record, Mr. Chairman, I am not fifty-five yet, I'm close.
Sorry about that. Okay, Tim, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, and I think I'm in agreement with Mike and Mr. Walker. You know, a little concerned about the density, but I also am concerned that the fact that we haven't updated a lot of our zoning bylaws. In quite some time. I do think that uh this project will bring some uh vitality to the area. It's been an overgrown lot for years. Um I, you know, as far as the mixed use, I agree with Mr. Ford. Um if you look, if you look down at Fifty-three Landing, that's a mixed-use property. There's no, there's no commercial on the first floor of that as yet. With, there's been talk of one coming, but I haven't seen it. And that's been in, that's been uh occupied for a couple of years now. So I think there are challenges that they would have for mixed use. I do think that fifty-five and above. And I'll agree with the, I'm, I'll identify with that demographic. I think that's probably one of the growing demographics that we have in town, is more and more folks. Attaining the age of fifty-five and older and looking to be able to get out, get out of a bigger house. Make room for the younger families to move into Brantree. Or maybe some of our own families to be able to buy homes and let us downsize. So, you know, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the density, but I also think, you know, this is a changing uh environment that we're in. Uh I think it's, I think the whole thing would be a good benefit to the, to the neighborhood, so I'd be in favor of it.
Thank you, Tim, and um. As for myself, I think I'm going to designate my house as a fifty-five and over commun- uh. Community development, but um, but I, I'm in agreement with both uh. Gary, Timmy, and Mike. I thought the building would come in a little bit smaller and a little bit less dense. However, I think that the way it's. Structured now. Um is manageable. Uh and livable. Uh as far as the town is concerned. Um I would have liked it a little smaller, but not to the point where I would object. To this going forward either. I want to, as uh, as Mr. McDonough and Mr. Walker said. Um Arista did go out and come back with a modified project. And I uh, I appreciate that. Some people, we try to adva- uh give uh our opinion to and has been totally ignored. Uh but Arista didn't totally ignore it. Um and I thank them for it. So um, that being said. A- and as uh Mr. McDonough or Richie said before, that as far as the other modifications go, that would go. To uh the planning board as far as crosswalks and other features. Uh and right turns or left turns, not us. Uh we could recommend some of those to uh. Try to help with the. Concern about traffic and pedestrian safety. But again, I am not totally opposed to the project as is, as it is presented. So does somebody want to make a motion?
Uh Chairman Cal, do you want uh separate motions for the three variances?
Uh why don't you do that, Mike, if you'd like? Sure.
Make a motion to approve the variance maximum story height. Uh to four, uh based on the topography of the, the lot.
The topography, the topography and soil conditions.
Yeah.
Now has been enumerated in, also the, the uh unique shape of the lot.
True. Thank you for amending my, my motion. I was going to save those for the next two.
Okay, but as far as variances go, they sort of all go together.
I understand. Uh so that, that I would like to make a, a motion um to grant the variance. Uh for density based on land area minimum of, of bedroom type. To allow for thirty units based on the soil shape and topography of the lot. And I would like to make a motion. Um to grant a variance for the open space per dwelling based on the soil shape and topography of the lot. To seventeen thousand eight hundred square feet.
Okay, can we also add in the recommendations of the planning board?
Well, I can.
Those motions.
I guess we can lump these all together. I'd make a motion to, to, to approve uh and define that, that the. Proposed development was one more detrimental to the neighborhood. With the variances already spoken to. Yes, and what did you want me to add there? I'm sorry.
The conditions that the planning board usually adds on at the end, that they have.
Based on the staff's recommendations, yes, sir. Thank you.
Now, there are seven of them, I believe.
Okay, I, I'll second all of the three individual motions and the additional, second all the motions. The three in particular and all the additions.
Motion's been made and seconded. I guess we need to take a roll call vote, or Connor will scold me, and Melissa is agreeing with that. So uh. Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. McDonough?
Aye.
Steve Carl, aye. Your petition is approved, subject to uh. The motions that were made and the conditions that were added on at the end. Um uh good luck with the project and uh good luck in front of the planning board.
Uh Mr. Chairman, uh I, I thank you for uh your constructive, constructive comments of the boards and suggestions. And also uh for. Um your perseverance with us and um in this project. Thank you.
You're welcome. As far as the members of the board go, and um we have one more bit of business to take up. And that is. That is the approval of.
Twenty twenty-one ZBA meeting calendar.
That's the one. Thank you, Connor.
Make a motion to accept the calendar as proposed.
A second.
Yeah, motion made and seconded. All in favor of accepting the calendar for uh.
Do you want a roll call vote on this as well?
Yeah, I guess so, for twenty twenty-one. Uh Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Uh Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. McDonough?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Steve Carl, aye. And I, I do that, just so everybody knows, and the way they show up on my screen. I don't take them in any particular order.
Oh, mine appear too, so.
Okay, uh so our next meeting is uh December?
Correct, uh December twenty-first. Um we have four petitions on the docket. Um sending their legal ads out uh sometime this week. Um we'll be hearing, it's, it's for single families, so it's not, nothing like this, that's for sure.
Okay.
Okay. Um alright, gentlemen and ladies, um thank you all very much.
Want a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Thank you both, Melissa and Connor. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. Uh Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
Uh Mr. McDonough, I'm sorry, I left you in the middle there. Uh Steve Carl, aye. Meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a ha- happy and s- safe Thanksgiving. Um and be well.
Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you for you guys.
Likewise, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanksgiving.
Thanks, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Good night.